Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2013. Leading us in the pledge of allegiance, Corporation Council, Lonnie Dunn.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With no other business before the meeting, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill, Mann.
Here.
Duster House.
Here.
Bauer.
Here.
Hobrook.
Here.
Havermill.
Here.
Farha.
Here.
Sasson.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Lepper.
Here.
Mussolini.
Here.
Brink.
Here.
Heinecke.
Here.
Hostlog.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent. Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move to excuse the absent Alderman.
Sorry, second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
Our first business is that reported Quincy Preservation Commission recommend the request to rescind the local landmark designation of 1001, 1003 State Street be denied was tabled for one week by Alderman Hostlog, and we do have a speaker tonight on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move to suspend the rolls and let the speaker speak.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. Okay, we'll now hear from Mr. Dempsey, 1680 Maine, and Mr. Dempsey, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes, please.
I am Terrell Dempsey, I am chairman of the Preservation, Chairperson.
Need to pull that microphone up.
Yeah, the mic, if you can.
Make sure it's...
Can you hear?
No.
I don't think it's on.
Hold on.
Here comes somebody.
I know they changed it beforehand.
I know, yeah. Okay, try it again.
Try it again. You got it on?
Turn on the switch.
There you go.
There you go.
You could blame the mic operator on this end for that one.
There you are. Is that better? Okay, anyway. I'm Terrell Dempsey, 1680 Maine, I'm the chairperson, or chair, I guess, of the Preservation Commission, and we met last week, and we were informed about the motion and voting to table, and we just thought it would be helpful to you if we put together a timeline that just kind of laid out what transpired on this particular event, this certificate of appropriateness, and then this resulting letter where the property owner requested that the property be removed as a landmark. I think of particular significance, and I've handed you, made you each a copy of the timeline. Mr. Fenton received a phone call from this individual in August, and it's his recollection at that time that they discussed that the property was landmarked, and talked in general about what needed to be done to do work on the structure. Then, in the middle of May, it was learned that the individual had begun work with neither a building permit nor a certificate of appropriateness, and I think it was the city encountered him working, or encountered work being done on the property without a permit. Then he came in at that point and began the process of applying for the application, for the certificate of appropriateness application, and he provided at that time a C of A with photographs that clearly showed these balcony brackets in place, and the certificate of appropriateness didn't reference anything about taking the balcony down. We, at the request of Mayor Moore, scheduled a special meeting to accommodate the property owner, so that we could very quickly address his needs. I think it's important to note that we approved the certificate of appropriateness to proceed with the windows, and we thought that everything was fine, then the next thing we know, we find out that he's gone beyond the certificate of appropriateness and torn off the balcony. He had been provided with a copy of the ordinance landmarking the structure, and we went over it with him and explained what the landmark features of the building were at the meeting when we issued the C of A. Then, the subsequent steps are laid out there for you in the paper, but I think the feeling of the Preservation Commission was this was a rather egregious violation. He turned around in July and sent a letter asking that the landmark status be rescinded. Our feeling is, and obviously, this is a voluntary process where people come forward, there are hearings, the property owner consents, and then the landmark status becomes like a lien or an easement and passes with the property from owner to owner. In this case, he had actual knowledge, if nothing else, it's undisputed that he had actual knowledge as of the May 28th meeting that we had with him, and the actions regarding this balcony were after that. And we just think it's very important to the integrity of the program, in fairness to all the people who comply with the landmarking laws, that this not degenerate into a program where it's like the placking program that Quincy Preserves runs, where we just acknowledge that something's a nice structure.
Thirty seconds.
The intention of landmark is to give some protection to the property, so we're asking you please to not follow our recommendation and not consider de-landmarking the property.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Alderwoman Lepper.
Yes, ma'am.
In your recollection, when was the first time that this landowner was notified that this was a, that his building had, that was a part of the landmark?
Would be the first time he saw the face of the building with the big plaque on it that says Quincy Landmark.
Did he understand, though, what that meant? I mean, because in your commentate, when you're talking to him, it didn't seem like he was quite aware of what he was able to do and not able to do with that landmark status. Is that correct or not?
Well, he definitely understood after that May 28th meeting. There's no question about that, and these actions did transpire after that. And Alderman Le...Alderwoman Lepper, I am an attorney, and, you know, we have actual knowledge, we have constructive knowledge. He had every type of knowledge you can have under the law. He had actual knowledge, constructive knowledge, he had actual knowledge from the sign, and he sat down and had all this explained in great detail. We actually sat with him on May 28th for a considerable amount of time, at a special meeting where we did nothing other than address his certificate of appropriateness, and he understood what needed to be done then, and yet elected to ignore the law, ignore the process, and proceed.
Alderman Brink.
Oh, Mr. Dempsey.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Havermill, last week brought up the issue of whether the landmark status was recorded on the deed. Is that part of the procedure when you identify these as, as an eighties of landmark status?
They're supposed to be recorded.
And this one was not, is that correct?
I don't know. It's my understanding that it was not, has been.
Has it been since then?
Yes.
And then?
I don't know when it was recorded in relation to when he took the balcony down. I just don't know that.
And this is a voluntary program, and the owner, so the owner actually seeks out the Preservation Commission's recommendation for landmark status?
The voluntary part, in fact, the intent of the law is to protect the property from subsequent owners' violations. The voluntary part is, we're very careful when a piece of property is landmarked that the owner consents, and then it becomes like an easement running with the property. It's like, I don't, when I bought my house at 18th and Main, I did not renegotiate with the utilities as to whether or not they still had easement across my property, I did not renegotiate with the city, I can't put a fence up across the sidewalk, you still have that easement across my property because you take it subject to the easement. He had knowledge, okay?
So when you're trying to determine if you're going to purchase a property, wouldn't the official document be the deed?
Well, that's how you take...
Whether there's a sign on the front of the building or not, you mean, wouldn't you go to the deed to determine whether it's landmark status or not?
Right.
And in this case, if you went to the deed, then it was not designated as landmark status, is that correct?
His actions were after the May 28th meeting.
Understand that.
He absolutely knew it was landmarked at that point.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Alderman Ryan.
Part of the landmark was the balcony. Is it your intention to reinstall that balcony on this property?
We're not in charge of enforcement, I honestly don't know what the enforcement...I think you'd need to ask the city attorney. I think that's the appropriate thing to do, the balcony should be reinstalled if it's available, if not...
But I mean, short of that, you've lost a big element in violation.
One element.
And then the doors...
And he's in vi...there's no question he's in violation.
And the doors are now windows?
No, they've, there've been a certificate of appropriateness, that is, that's been appropriated.
It's okay to get rid of those doors and make windows there, right?
I beg your pardon, sir.
On the second floor.
Not without a certificate of appropriateness.
Oh, well, what's happened, I mean, you can see it in the pictures, and I'm just wondering if the intention is to somehow get that property restored to the way it was whenever it got landmark status, if that's what's going to happen, who's going to pay for that? That's my question. So can somebody answer that?
What's the question, Alderman?
Well, obviously, if that's to be done, it would be incumbent upon the property.
I was going to say, it would, if we continue on with enforcement action, it'd be incumbent upon the land, or the property owner to do that himself, to come into compliance with the ordinance.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you understand why...
But, you know, I get what you get, but is it appropriate for us to talk, to discuss this while we're suspended?
No, we ought to. Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion to resume sitting as City Council.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Alderman Havermill.
Mike, Alderman Ryan, to address your comment, again, it would, what happened here is when they redid the front of the building, where you see the, some of the windows that were changed, there was a request to do that, and the Preservation Commission met and approved that change, that it did not violate the landmark status. The balcony is a completely separate issue, and was a land, a point of landmarking, an architecturally significant component of the building. So there, if we find, if we don't rescind this, or if we decide to enforce this, it would be incumbent upon them to put that back up somehow.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I'd like to make a recommendation to override the Preservation Commission and remove the properties from the landmark status. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed?
No.
So ordered. Motion carries.
Next is reported the Traffic Commission. The Traffic Commission recommends that a three-way stop be implemented at the intersection of Ninth and Spring Streets. There is large number of pedestrian crossing at this intersection, increasing vehicle traffic.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move that we concur with the Traffic Commission.
Second.
You need an ordinance.
And an ordinance drafted.
We have a motion of second to concur with the Traffic Commission and draft an ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
The next one is, the Traffic Commission recommends that yield signs be placed at the intersection of Josephine Drive and Freeze Drive, with Josephine Drive yielding to Freeze Drive.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move we concur with the report of the Traffic Commission and have an ordinance drafted.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
And we have, that was tabled last week, the Fire and Police Commissioners making the reappointment of Police Chief Rob Copley, tabled by Alderman Ryan.
We can have Police and Fire Commission Chairman Charlie Don come up, please.
I want to bring the Commissioners up here, so you'll know who they are, and thank you, Mayor, for, and Alderman for having guests here tonight, I appreciate it very much. This is David Ayers, who is the oldest member in our department, he's been chairman of it.[947.01][947.01](Laughter) They're getting at me, I'm 88. And Nick Wentz here, we're all three have served as chairman here, and between us, we got more than 50 years of service in this type of work.
Can you make sure you speak into the mic, please?
So, okay.
Mr. Don.
Keep it in the mic, Gunner.
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, I want to apologize for my dress tonight, because everybody's asked me what my wife hit me with, but I just got out of surgery, they removed the cancer on my face, and I've got just a little bit of paralyzing in my mouth and lips here, so if I slur something, will I tell them to repeat it again? My purpose to get to you tonight, try to bring up to you some of the things that, how we do our work, and what is legal and what is by ordinance. The Fire and Police Commissions were created to stop political hiring of Fire and Police Department people, creating an independent, non-political body in the Commissioners. And the Commissioners, they hire, we hire only people today that are qualified and earned by the Department through a testing process, and anybody can test us today, men, women, anybody can test us, because it's available to them. Chief Copley has been with the Quincy Fire Department for 26 years, and he has helped and watched the Quincy Police Department get, kill that, kill it, get that off. He's seen, he's seen and helped the Quincy Police Department grow from a good unit into one of the nation's best org. Now, the chiefs that come here and test here, they run into nothing throughout the state of Illinois that exists here in Quincy, in our Fire Department and in our Police Department. And we're very proud of it, because I want to chat just a little bit about Joe Hennings, what a great thing that young man has done, he's a very unusual person. We hooked on his five-year term, that the mayor and the HR people, and his salary for three years, that you people know all about that, and education, that man went out and did it all. He traded work, worked with the John Woods College, and he saved this city many, many dollars to accomplish what they've done out there, you know? He also has earned the chief fire officer, this is appointed by the state Fire Marshal over there, and I'm going to skip some things down here, because what I do now, I'm going to talk from what is available in the ordinance, and come back and ask questions, and maybe two or three other. The item point 1003, appointment of, the mayor shall appoint by and with advice and consent of the City Council. Yes, under appointments. There is hereby created an office of the Chief of Police. We had the chief in the Fire Department, and back in the early days, they were city policemen, they were city marshals, or superintendent of police, it's on that. The chiefs shall be appointed by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. The term of office shall not exceed five years, that helps, the Alderman, and I was wondering about the five-year term. And this, the term of office not to exceed five years. Under the appointment and promotion period, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners shall appoint all officers and members of the Fire and Police Department and the Municipal, including the Chief of Police and the Chief of the Fire Department. I'm going to skip over a page here or two, and get in again to the, what is our policy and how we do it. The sole authority is issued certificates by the Department shall be vested in the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and all certificates of appointment issued by any officer or member of the Fire and Police Department, the Municipal shall be signed by the Chairman and the Secretary respective of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of such magical. Upon appointment of such officers, the members of the Fire Department and the Police Department each finishedable by action of the Fire and Police Department. We gave the Board notice here that we had extended the five-year term to our two existing chiefs, and they are now in that period, on a five-year period. There's, Chief Copley is the only police officer that's even served a five-year period in a job. Gruber didn't, Wilson didn't, and the last officer that we had here. And I don't know exactly when all this was put into place, but apparently it was before or after Chief Wells's time. Now, if you can still hear my voice, why, we'll take questions, and we'll try to answer any question, if you have in mind, ask us to it, and I apologize for my having difficulty of reading here, because I'm just partly paralyzed on this side of my mouth, you know, so. And Alderman Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I would. So the mayor's elected for four years, and you have the option of extending these terms from one to five years. Why did you choose five years?
Well, you Aldermans did that.
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
You and the mayor did that, you put it in your ordinance.
Yeah.
And, so it's nothing, nothing that we've done, now.
No, no, you have the option of one to five. You could have picked any number in between there, you picked five. Why didn't you pick three or four? What's the criteria that you used and the thought process that you went through?
Well, these, these two individuals...
I just don't know, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Well, these two individuals, we extended, would deserve 10 years, and we're lucky to have them. Now, the other good point about this is, if you're going to go outside, which we did when Chief Gruber came to town, you have to give them some time, or you won't get the people to come in. And the chiefs all across the state on both Fire Department and Police Department tell us what is going on in Quincy, it doesn't exist in other parts of the country. Now, no person has served a five-year straight period but our current Chief Copley, he's the only person in it. Now, just because the Commissioners promote you and extend your term for five years, that don't mean you're going to last, because you have to live up to the code, so you make mistakes and violate the rules, because we're going to support what the mayor and Alderman has put together for us to work with. And it's what we do together makes things work and makes things happen, and we're proud to have the mayor and Alderman on our team, because you're, this body here has financed our Police and Fire Department very well over the years here in this system, they're very good, they're in very good shape, so you've been very nicely. Go ahead now.
Alderman Ryan, any additional questions?
Geez, I thought I had to...
Alderman Brink.
Oh, yes, Your Honor, thank you. Mr. Don, the code is pretty clear that if the Police and Fire Commission gives the City Council notice within four months, then actually, it's the Police and Fire Commission decision only. If they don't give the Council notice, then within 30 days of that term, then the Council can decide to reappoint or not to reappoint. So by you giving us notice, it's your decision, your decision only, the way I see it. But the code is also very clear when it sets annual evaluations. The Commission shall conduct annual evaluations of the Fire and Police Chiefs. Have they been done?
Yes, the, here is the Chief of Police, he went in five years and answered every question we have on our, if you want to know the categories, we'd be glad to have you there, and also the, the Chief of, Fire Chief, here's his, and everything that we ask for is in our, over and above, because Joe Hennings is one sharp individually.
I'm not questioning the chiefs, I'm questioning the procedure. So, has a five, every year, has any evaluation been done?
Go ahead.
Well, like with the Chief of Police, the ongoing legislation at the state level that they enforce, the laws that they enforce, a guy has to have at least five years to be coherent in what's going on, it changes daily, and we've got a great investment in these, well, as you know, and we've got a great investment in these people, and if they don't perform, the Board will handle it seriously, we take it very seriously. I don't know what's broken here, so I don't know what we can fix.
Well, there's nothing broken, we have a great organization on this thing. And are you...
The question I have, the question I have, the code clearly states, the Commission shall conduct annual evaluations of the Fire and Police Chiefs.
They are done.
Annually, and they have been done every year.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And the last part of the code says, the Commission shall report the results of such evaluations to their respective chiefs in the City Council.
Well, we are required to advise you.
Sure.
You mean, are you referring, you wanting copies or something of it?
I just wanted to make sure they were done, that's the only thing I was trying to, that was my goal. If you could, if you assure me they have been done annually, I'm fine.
If I what?
If you assure me they have been done on an annual basis, I am fine.
Yeah. Now, to get back to what you, and appreciate what you're asking about there, here are some of the things that, under the evaluation, it comes up. Leadership, planning, organizational administrative ability, judgment and problem-solving abilities, oral and written communication, skills, attitude, skills of developing subordinate employees, relationship with subordinate employees, administration and the public as well, other matters of which the Board of Foreign Pressure, Pressure and Reception would be grateful and elevate as a Commissioner. The Commissioner shall report all results of such evaluation respectfully to the chiefs and the Council and the mayor on that. These, and this particular group, let me, let me just go and I'll verify...
Mr. Don, I think that's, that's okay, I don't, I don't, I don't think there are enough, anybody else has any questions?
Well, we're prepared to show you what they...
We appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I don't have a comment, I don't have a question for the Commission, I just have a comment, I, I don't want to speak further, Alderman, and the reason I voted to table, first off, we cannot discuss a motion to table, so there was, there was no discussion last week. Secondly, I don't think anybody up here is necessarily questioning the abilities of the chiefs involved, and I don't want to speak for any other Alderman, if I'm out of line, please let me know, but I think we were just kind of concerned, I know I've been on for 10 years, and I haven't ever been presented with a evaluation of the, of any chief. So, I think it was more of a question of the process, I don't think there's anything necessarily broken, I think it's better, maybe better communication between the Commission and the Council is probably what we're, what we're asking for. So, again, I, again, I think the chiefs do an outstanding job, and I hope the public understands this was not a question of our chiefs, in my mind, it was a question of procedure, and I hope everybody understands that clearly.
Alderman Brink.
Yes, I just want to reiterate what Alderman Havermill said, I mean, I think before we as a Council, you know, agreed to a five-year appointment, our, it's our responsibility to make sure the procedures have been followed, and that's the only thing I was trying to accomplish, I believe that's one thing Mr. Ryan was trying to accomplish.
Keep this in mind, the mayor and the Alderman, you have an opportunity to change anything you don't like on it. If you want to tell us we have to go more than three years, fine, if you tell us we have to go one year, fine, but it would interfere if you have to go outside the city and get someone, just in case you didn't have someone qualified. Now, we've got a good backup now, we've got good people that's, well, qualified to step in there if we need them, but we want to work, and we appreciate what you Aldermen and mayors do for us, you know, so, anything else? Again, thank you very much, and I apologize for my...
Thank you, Mr. Don. I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the report of the Fire Police Commission on the reappointment of Chief Copley.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
And then we also have the reappointment of Fire Chief Joe Hennings that was tabled.
We have a motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.
Our... Our first resolution is recommend approval of low bid of Centus Corporation in the amount of $8,137.04 for a two-year contract beginning 12/1/13 and ending 11/30/15 for uniforms provided by the union. Contract was tabled for one week on motion Alderman Farha.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman Farha.
It's my unfortunate responsibility report. We still haven't reached a decision, so I would move that we lay that on the table and refer it back to the Finance Committee.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, ordered.
Okay. Next resolution is utilities director and purchasing interim director recommending low bid for bids for a one-year contract beginning January 1st, 2014 and ending December 31st, 2014 for various chemicals used by the water treatment plant from various companies.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill, Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
The resolution is adopted.
Our next resolution is adopting the emergency operations plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
Who's the, what's the driving force behind this plan? Do we not have one in place right now?
That would be me. We don't have one in place right now. And one of the things, first week when I came into office, I met with the public safety officials and John Sim of the Emergency Management and asked about a plan. We don't have a playbook, so to speak. And so what this does is it gives us a emergency operations plan and then on the back they, what they call annexes, where then we can have in our adopted emergency operations plan what to do in case of a snowstorm, a tornado, flood. And yeah, and it gives future administrations not only, you know, when to act, who to call, who can mobilize, you know, certain like the Red Cross and things like that. So basically, the, the goal of this is over the next three years is to have the emergency operation and plan and the annexes all filled out. That way, if for some unfortunate reason, there'd be a new administration in four years, if the mayor took the oath of office on day one and there was a flood, he would have a playbook to go from and know what to do.
Okay. Good. I just wanted, just want to make sure where it was coming from. Thanks.
Yes. We have a motion, was there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill, Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
The ordinance is adopted.
Another ordinance up for adoption, which is also a code change at 2415 Large Road.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to adopt the ordinance. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill, Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Havermill.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
The ordinance is adopted.
Next ordinance is up for first presentation and this is amending Chapter 19, Article 5, Peddlers.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
No, it's up for first reading.
First reading. I'm sorry. I move to be read first time by title.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to read the ordinance first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance amending Article 6 Peddlers of Chapter 19 Business Licenses of the Municipal Code of the City of Quincy of 1980, hearings of first reading by title only.
Your Honor.
Yes, Alderman.
Can I ask one quick question on that?
You bet.
I did not notice when I was reading this over if there was a cost involved or not. Would somebody like to iterate if this is free of charge or if there is an extra cost?
Chief Copley can answer that.
Thank you.
It would be the same as any other peddler's license and it's a $5 fee.
I'm sure if we discussed that in committee that, you know, not having it, it was just easier just to keep it at the $5. It was very minimal.
Right. And our thought when we put this together was rather than create a new ordinance to cover the selling and giving away of animals on public property, just incorporate into peddling since it is similar activity. And rather than change the ordinance, just incorporate the fee with this as well.
Is this going to be hard for us to enforce?
It would be like any other peddling situation. If we get complaints that they, that they feel someone is peddling without a license, we investigate it. If an officer sees someone, they have the ability to stop and ask to see their license. I really don't see it as an enforcing issue, enforcement issue.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Chief.
Just one comment though. Chief, you might just, you got the next two. There might be questions if you want.
Save me some stats.
Yeah.
Stats, thank you, Chief.
The next one is also up for first reading and this is amending litter definition in Article 1 of Chapter 21.
I move this to be read first time by title only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to read the ordinance first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance amending Article 1, nuisance and abatement of nuisance of Chapter 21, health regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Quincy of 1980, hearings of first reading by title only.
Any questions? Alderman Ryan.
We'd like to ask Chief to explain the significance of this particular amendment.
Effective January 1st, the State Litter Control Act has language added to it specifically naming cigarette butts as litter. This just puts mirrors of state law in our ordinance and would give us the ability to write the ordinance at which has a lower fine than the state law so that we would have more of a gradual approach. If someone continues to be a problem, we can always write the state law with the higher fines, but this would give us the officer's ability to use the city ordinance. We did add the language of filtered cigar butts. There, there's not a lot of those out there, but they do exist. That is not in the state law. We thought that the filter being the issue that that should be added in.
Any additional questions?
No.
Thank you.
And we have the last ordinance. It's also up for first reading and this amends Article 3, cats of Chapter 22. It's cat fee.
I'll move this to be read first time by title only.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to read this ordinance first time by title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk will now read the ordinance first time by title only.
An ordinance amending Article 3, cats of Chapter 22, animals of the Municipal Code of the City of Quincy of 1980, hearings of first reading by title only.
Are there any questions? Alderman Brink.
Yeah, Chief, is there enforcement issue with this?
This could have, yeah, enforcement issue attached to it. It would be done similar to the way the county does with the dog tags as far as how they're, they're issued and paid for. We, we already issue the tags, so that's not going to be an issue. It's more of, all this really changes is paying for the tags. The issues with tags already exist for cats. This enforcement issue might be whether someone does, opts not to do this because there is a fee.
So how do you determine whose cat it is?
If they have the tags on it, you determine it by the tag.
Obviously.
If they don't, then it's up for somebody to claim, claim the cat.
I was always told that if you feed it, you own it.
That's true. That is true.
Yeah.
If, if a, you have a stray cat problem and someone is feeding them at their residence or anywhere, they are now the owner of that cat.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I have the report of the finance. Transfers to be $174,500. Expenditures to be $804,769.54. And payroll to be $152,593.88. Duster House, Farha, Sassen, Havermill, Oslog Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the report we received and the vouchers issued for the various amounts.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gill, Mann.
Aye.
Duster House.
Aye.
Bauer.
Aye.
Holbrook.
Aye.
Farha.
Aye.
Sassen.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Lepper.
Aye.
Mussolini.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Heinecke.
Aye.
Oslog.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one absent.
So ordered.
And our next item on the agenda is request to speak under suspended rules on the garbage issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Alderman.
I move the rules be suspended and the requesting speaker be allowed to speak.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. We will now hear from Ms. Klein. And a guest.
I just want to speak here, though.
And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, and I would like to make that correction. I go by Mary Anne Klein, not Mary Klein.
Oh, okay.
But thank you.
You bet.
And I live at 2100 Alba Boulevard. I'd like to, Mayor Moore and members of the council, like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As President of the League of Women Voters of Adams County, I'm here to read a statement, actually, which reflects the League's thoughts on proposals to change the way in which garbage and recycling items are collected in Quincy. This subject is of keen interest to our League, which has long been involved in efforts to address issues which affect the quality of life in Quincy. Some examples from our history. In 1953, a League study of local water and waste systems led to eventual modernization of the sewer system. In 1954, League studied the problem of crowding in some of our public schools and endorsed the building of a new senior high in Quincy. In 1966, the League study led to the hiring of a full-time Director of Parks and Recreation. In 1995, the League was represented on the Mayor's Task Force on Solid Waste Management. The work of this task force led to a ban on leaf burning in the city of Quincy and improvements in the recycling system. In 2007, the League spearheaded efforts to create the Adams County Green Coalition, which had as its goal to explore, develop, and support green initiatives in Adams County. The proposed changes are of keen interest to us because of the League's efforts to encourage recycling, to encourage Quincy to become more and more of a green community. Second, the League promotes education and understanding among citizens as a necessary background to inform decision-making. We are concerned because the scope and implications of the proposed changes are not clear to the citizenry. It's our sense that many, many do not feel that they have a grasp yet of the implications and effects on them of the proposed changes. We believe it is unwise to proceed with a major programmatic change which people do not sufficiently understand and are therefore more likely to resent if they feel it has been inflicted on them. Several members of our League attended the public sessions at St. Peter Catholic Church and the Quincy Public Library last week. Strong opinions were voiced and many, many facets of the issue were addressed. Effects on citizens, individuals, families, those on fixed incomes, residents of multi-units. Effects on efforts to encourage recycling. The need to repair and replace city equipment. The effects of outsourcing an essential service. The value of the city retaining control of an essential service. Budgetary implications. And unenforced city ordinance. The absence of a franchise fee. Raising the price of garbage stickers and many more. It was apparent to many who attended these sessions that the proposal to privatize raises so many questions that a wide-ranging study needs to be done. We submit that this is an issue which requires more opportunities for our fellow citizens to educate themselves about the implications of such a proposal. The League's approach is to study thoroughly before deciding on the positions it will advocate for. To return to a moment in our history, the League studied the effect of leaf burning on air quality in Quincy and took steps to educate our community about the detrimental health effects of leaf burning. Our League collaborated with other organizations, including representatives from the medical community, to raise awareness. The League was then represented on the Mayor's Task Force on Solid Waste Management. An ordinance banning leaf burning resulted and the improvements in the recycling program occurred. The League helped to educate our community about the benefits of recycling. The current sticker program was designed to encourage citizens to recycle for its obvious ecological benefits, but also because it would extend the life of the landfill, saving money in the long run while providing some funds to the city. The sticker program was not conceived as a program which would pay for recycling. An event even more recent in our history, the League led efforts to collaborate with other entities to create the Adams County Green Coalition, including the City Planning Commission, the U of I Extension Office, and other county groups. The League of Women Voters of Adams County respectfully suggest to the council that any proposal that would involve major changes in how we deal with garbage and recycling in Quincy be tabled until a more thorough, community-wide study be conducted. When the council decides to revisit the change proposed, the League of Women Voters requests that it be a part of an effort, perhaps a task force, to study various approaches to the collection of garbage and recycled items in Quincy. I'm with, this evening I'm with Mary Anne Warren, whom many of you know, who is active in the Green Coalition and has the Chair of the Ecology Committee for the League of Women Voters. We have some copies of my statement, which we'd like to share with you. We have some copies of my statement, which we'd like to share with you, and I also would like to, in addition, is a sheet which extracts bullet points for your consideration.
Before those are handed out, are there any questions? Thank you.
Shall we leave these?
Yeah. I would just leave them there.
Thank you for your time.